Okay, could everyone take their seats, please? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order, and we are to the City Attorney's Report. Audrey, do you have anything for us tonight?
Um, I'm getting a head gesture saying no. I did send an email out, and I believe Mayor Nelson will mention it during the mayor's...
We'll cover that. Thank you very much. And then we are at the City Manager's Report. John Gucciano, our acting city manager.
Actually, the first item tonight is one that Nicole has for you.
Hello. The first thing that we do have is a donation fund. Do I have something on my face?
You just want the authorization to set up this fund?
Yes, we just want authorization to set up the donation fund. I did meet with one of our city residents who came to Carl and I with a request asking us if he can fundraise for the dog park, so...
Correct. Forgive me if I run this along. Are there a motion?
No, go ahead.
Motion in a second? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Are they gonna have air conditioning?
I don't think so.
Wait a minute. No, I think we're just setting up the fund, right?
Just setting up the fund.
Setting up the fund, okay. So a motion in a second to set up the fund for the dog park. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilman Slahta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Good deal, okay. And we have item B.
The next item is just an approval of the agreement with the county to go ahead with the use of the CDBG funds for this current year. You had previously approved that list of items for Depot Park and Community Hall. I do have one addition, happily. We heard today, I should say that the amount of money that we anticipate spending on the projects that are already identified will not use up the complete allocation for the year, at least that's our estimate. I did hear back from the county today about another project that we had proposed, and that is the small sidewalk improvement project on Dean Street. And as of this afternoon, they gave us approval to include that in this list, so if you authorize that again tonight, we'll just amend the agreement to include the Dean Street project. We'll be able to go ahead with all of those.
Very nice, very nice.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And we have a second. End of the discussion.
Including Dean Street.
Including Dean Street. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slahta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, anything else, John?
Two very quick items. One, and I believe that Councilwoman Martin had been here, she would've brought this up, but let me do that. Our Public Works Department, and Dave Licardi in particular, has been working with the Tree Advisory Board relative to an event that's gonna take place this Saturday, the ninth, at Riverside Park in conjunction with the native plant sale. Dave has been working with the Forestry Resources and Lee County in order to, as part of this event, have an educational outreach. It's part of the Florida Yards and Neighborhoods Education Program. By the city doing this and participating, co-hosting this event here within the city limits, we are actually able to be eligible for credits under the NPDES program and the TMDL requirements.
Super.
So it's not only an effective way to get our message out, but it also works effectively in the sense that it's able to be quantified, documented, and we get credit for it in the long run. I wanted to thank the Tree Advisory Board and Councilwoman Martin for helping us coordinate that, and we're looking forward to a great event on Saturday.
Nicely done, alright.
One other very quick item, and this relates back to the Relay for Life issue that you dealt with before. I just wanted to thank you. As you are very well aware, it's uncomfortable sometimes for staff to be in a position where they are being asked to modify previous policies that have been set. They are often reluctant to change policy, modify regulations, even though their instinct may be to do so. We appreciate being able to work so closely with council and be able to share these things and come to, we think, a conclusion that nobody's unhappy with in terms of where we're going with that, so thank you very much.
Good. It is a magic act, isn't it? At times. Thank you very much. Anything else, John?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, Council, forgive me, I usually don't go first here, but because it says so, I'm going to. Resolution appointing a chair. I've, my suggestion and my motion is to appoint Sam Vincent as chair of the planning agency. And is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Slahta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Okay, and then another resolution appointing the chair of the Board for Land Use Hearings will be Wesley Norris.
Move to approve.
Moved and approved. We got a motion second. Any other comment? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longkart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilman Slahta.
Aye.
Okay, Council, on this fireworks issue, we don't need to belabor this. All I would, wanted to put this on here because I didn't want to go off and go rogue here on you. I need to get your permission, if you would, if you're so inclined, to allow me to work with staff to see if there is anything at all you can do anyway. There may not be, but you have to admit, the fireworks thing has really ratcheted up in the last five years or so, and this young lady finally had enough, and I mean had enough. So if it's okay with you, if you're just gonna give a head nod, we can work with council and we can kinda do some investigation, see if there's anything you can do, because sometimes there's not.
You know, you're allowed to get a permit only if you're using it for agriculture to scare birds, and people shoot fireworks into my property and scare my birds, I'm on egg. So it's like, no, wait, I'm supposed to be able to do that, not other people.
Right.
So I'm all for that.
Yeah.
What we can do.
And I want to make it clear to everyone, but obviously here in Bonita, we're not against fun, so, but, but you know what? Sometimes, this is what happens when things go a little too far, so thank you very much for your support on that. We'll just take a look at it and see what we can figure out. And then here we are. We need a discussion regarding attendance at the Florida Chamber of Commerce Legislative Days. And I guess that's you, Martha?
No.
Or is it Peter? Is that you?
Yeah.
This is Simmons.
Pete?
Just wanted to bring it up and see what the will and the pleasure was of the group. There's a couple of opportunities. I know there's the chamber, I know there's the Florida League of Cities, and there's yet a third opportunity, right? Or at least those two.
I think, and let me tell you what, I think that the plan is, is that we've been working with the economic, because we have our own set of issues, and I think we have enough people that are willing to go, we're planning, we're hoping to partner as a city with the chamber and the Economic Development Committee because we all have matching goals on the way up there, if not pretty close. And so we're planning to do a trip together with them on there, and she's supposed to get that date out for us.
And we've got March 5th through 7th. We have the application forms, and I believe that Carl indicated that we've got tentative approvals from Councilwoman Martin, Peter, and Stephen, I believe.
And me.
And Ben.
And me.
We don't have a quorum then.
Now, now, what, but what we're gonna do, as it was pointed out by Steve, we're gonna need to do something about that meeting because there is a meeting, a council meeting was planned for that day, so if we have so many, and the reason we're going at that time is because it's chamber days, like, you know, way it is. So if we're gonna go at that particular time, we're gonna go and have to go ahead and defer that meeting at that time. So that decision will have to be made at some point, yes.
My only concern with deferring that meeting is that's the first reading of the homeless shelter.
Right, but we can advertise the first reading instead for March 20th and the 2nd.
Yeah, let me finish. There's been so much, so much concern about this homeless shelter, I don't want to do anything to let the public think that we're not trying to do it in a timely fashion. So if you can advertise and convince everybody that that's the case, then that's fine with me.
Yeah.
True.
Well, yeah, I mean, and we had limited options. It was go to Tallahassee with the Giant School Bus with everybody else, and we weren't too satisfied with the, number one, the accommodations and some of the other stuff, although Heather and Joe do a great job and everything like that. We ended up going off on our homeless time anyway. So we thought that this would be a better option for us, and this happened to be the time when there was a lot of activity there. So I think you're right, Stephen. I think that the main thing to do is to allow people to see, look, we're gonna be up there doing your bidding right then. We could leave four of you here to listen to the whole thing, but...
There aren't four of us. Four have already said they're going.
They're not gonna be four here, yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm not gonna be going at that time because I'm kinda watching the fertilizer stuff, and you know, when Carol Green rings the bell, I'm gonna go run, and I'm trying to work out something with the county so I can fly up there like that day.
Yep.
So that's also an opportunity we need to look at because now that Commissioner Judah is gone, he was the one that was able to arrange a Port Authority plane to go up, which was really sweet because you split it four ways and it was really cheap. But I don't know, Mayor, if you could make that connection...
John Manning has made the same offer to us.
Has he?
Yeah.
Okay, that's very good.
So he would be your contact person for that.
Very good, because that's what I think I'm gonna do, so I won't be going on the big trip with y'all.
Yeah, I think John Manning, so remember to contact him.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll sort through that here in the next couple of weeks here. We're gonna have to figure out whether we're gonna have that meeting or not, but we'll go ahead and do that by email. John, you can go ahead and kinda figure out what you want to do and what kind of agenda we got, alright? Okay, do you have anything else, Pete?
No, I was just gonna say, but it sounds like we won't have a quorum anyway.
Yeah.
For that meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna have to work something out, yeah.
Okay. No, that was, that was why I wanted to bring that up, given when the chamber had the scheduled trip.
Okay.
And Carl will be going too, so I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, great, thanks.
Alright, well, good. Alright, Martha, do you have anything for us today?
Yeah, I do. Well, since Councilwoman Martin isn't here, I get to tell you about Bark in the Park. 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM this Saturday, the ninth. Make sure you get there, that'll be great for your friendly pets to go to the park at Riverside Park. Also, I have tickets, as we do, the mayor, I'm sure he has his tickets, or he probably has his sold, but we really need to support the Crew Concert, he's good at that, the Crew Concert in downtown Bonita. It's gonna be March 23rd. You can get your tickets online at, oops, sorry, at creutrust.org, or you can buy them from me, or the mayor, or probably at City Hall here at the front desk if I can arrange for Alana to sell them for me. I want to thank everybody. I had several deaths in my family, and I just want to thank everybody for their sweetness, their cards, their kindness, staff, friends, neighbors, community people, and colleagues here. Thank you. It meant a lot to me. I felt hugged by Bonita Springs. I did have another thing, I'm so sorry.
That's alright.
I wrote it on a piece of paper here. I'm trying to find it because I have so much stuff I scribbled down. Can you come back to me?
I can come back to you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bill. Yeah, what do you have for us today, Bill?
Mayor, I'd just like to thank you for the way you handled the Palmyra situation.
Well, thank you.
Sincerely. And of course, I would like to know if we could ask John Dolmier where we are. I would like to know that, too.
John, could you come up here for a minute? That's probably what, that's probably what Martha's looking for.
No, I found it.
So, John, where do you stand with that situation with Horton, and how do you like your odds?
We have spoken with the representative of the property owner of that remaining three and a half acres, and we've also spoken with the engineer for DR Horton. And we have requested that they talk to their clients, gauge the interest, and we would be happy to sit down with them to discuss different options for access locations, and also make the process as simple and painless as possible if they decide to do that. So that way, they don't feel like they are being put further behind or having more difficulty by being accommodating. Their representatives have said that they want to be good neighbors, they have nothing to gain by being bad neighbors, and that while they couldn't confirm anything, they expected them to at least be willing to sit down and discuss opportunities.
Any timeframe yet, anybody?
I think that I should hear something probably by Friday at the latest.
Okay.
If I hear something sooner, I will definitely send information off so that everyone is up to date.
And make sure that every council person is, you know...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, could, and try, try to make an, try to make an effort, that doesn't make sense. Go ahead and try to set up a meeting with them if you can. I mean, I would encourage you to, let me pull like that, I can't tell you to. I would encourage you to try to set up a meeting with that representative, and like you said, just tell them that, look, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make it painless for you.
Yes, sir.
If you go to do this. It's probably in everybody's interest, because I looked at the drawings, and I looked at what they're asking for. They're really, I look at the drawings, there's no difference between one or the other physically. It's just in the minds of the people in Palmyra and St. Remo, so I don't think that they're asking for a whole lot.
And I think there are some opportunities there. I don't think this is gonna be a difficult situation, assuming that they're cooperating...
Good, and we really appreciate you working on that, okay?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Nicely done, okay?
I'm done, Ben, thank you.
Good, good. Alright, did you think about...
I did remember my last one, and that was just to recognize the contribution by a very gentle man who lived in Bonita Springs almost his whole life, who passed away. He was a veteran, he was a member of St. Leo's. I know Nicole Perino saw him every day at the rec center, working out until he was 92 years old. He went to church, he pulled over to the side of the road and passed away. Lived his whole life, being very kind to people and being very concerned about his neighbors, and just a sweet man. Gene Schneider, remember him, his family came in the 1920s. His father was a good friend of Hub Johnson, which not many people were like a good friend of Hub Johnson. So when city slicker Gene Schneider came down in the 1930s, and he said, "Well, where's Hub Johnson?", they kinda wondered, like, why is the city slicker coming up for Hub Johnson? But anyhow, just remember, Gene Schneider, District Five, but of Bonita Springs, was a neat guy. That was really all I had that was extra, but I just wanted to remember Gene. He was a neat man, wasn't he?
Thank you for doing that. That's always great.
Thank you.
And Pete, you had something a little extra here.
Sure, I just had a couple of other quick things, thanks. I misunderstood you at the time. Wanted to thank the League of Women Voters of Lee County. They invited a bunch of elected officials, and it was a great turnout at the Saturday meeting, and Bonita Springs was well represented with Councilman McIntosh, Councilman Longkart, myself, Kathleen Morgan from the school board, Ed Fitzgerald, and our state representative, Ray Rodriguez. That was a great program. There were so many, the turnout was so big, as a matter of fact, that it took about the entire two hours for everybody to speak, and everybody was limited to just a few minutes, and so there's no time for questions and answers, but I would encourage them to do that again. That was a nice program. And right here in council chambers on February 19th at 6:00 PM, Congressman Trey Radell is gonna be here for a town hall meeting. It's part of his listening tour for constituents to ask questions and get information. He was in town last week, he was in Fort Myers, and he was in Naples, and once again, that's February 19th here at City Hall at 6:00 PM with Congressman Trey Radell, and I would encourage everybody to attend, and let's give him a big warm welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pete. Stephen, what do you have for us?
Two things. Mark your calendars, council people. The middle school government days, our day is set for March 21st. This year, we're having Bonita Springs Middle School as well as the Charter School come in. It'll be one in the morning and one in the afternoon. It's not the huge event that the high school was, where we need everybody here taking people. This'll be a half dozen kids come in, tour the building, and sit up here and make a couple of decisions. So please, if you can't be here, that's fine, but if you can, it just makes it more, a better event.
21st.
21st of March. I need to put the council on notice. This gets a little touchy, but before the city incorporated as a city of Bonita Springs, the unincorporated portion of Lee County, known as Bonita Springs, went at least up to Williams Road. When the Florida state legislature set the city limits as a fire district, it didn't take any recognition into neighborhoods and developments that had occurred since the 1800s and the fire district was cut. We've had a good working relationship with the Estero Council of Community Leaders over those last 12 years. They've done a nice job of working with us and working with the citizens in unincorporated Lee County. There is a movement now by a group called Vote Estero to incorporate into the Village of Estero. The impact it has on this city are obvious, but for my personal neighborhood, it's more than obvious, it's a problem. When the fire district, when the city limits were cut, it took 20% of Pelican Landing out and left them in the unincorporated part of the county. I have to tell you, the unwritten agreement we've had, the ECCO, I think, is in jeopardy. They haven't come out to support Vote Estero yet and incorporate, but I don't, I think it's dicey for them to stay in the background too long. I will tell you that while council retains, I know, a neutral stance on any inclusion of any portion of Lee County into the city, I can't idly stand by and allow people to say that an unknown group of people can be better representatives of a group of citizens than can a proven city council with a record of fiscal responsibility, transparency, and responsiveness to the city can do. So I'm stepping outside my bounds probably as a city councilman, but I can tell you, I won't stand by and let this happen without making my voice known about where I think we need to be when this comes. The Vote Estero, there is some urgency. The Vote Estero people have said publicly that they're gonna push for a November referendum to create a Village of Estero. There is a two-mile buffer at the moment, but those have come and gone when villages, cities try to incorporate. So that's my comment back to my city council members, so if I've stepped on toes here or elsewhere, otherwise, I'm sorry, but that's my position. Thank you.
Well, so I'll go ahead and help, and I won't just step on toes, probably. It'll be other things, too, but you're absolutely right. I mean, we, I think that there's been a lot of patience shown by a lot of people, and as somebody who's lived in Bonita Springs a long time, and I expressed this to the ECCO when we went up there to see them several times, is that I thought it was amazing how, you know, when we incorporated, everything that was outside of the city of Bonita Springs suddenly became Estero, just magically. And when, that wasn't what it was. It's unincorporated Bonita Springs in the area that you're talking about. And that's pure and simple. I went to school with the kids in Coconut and Spring Creek, and they all came to Bonita, and that's always the way it's been. Now, there are some people within that community that think otherwise, and that's okay, but I have people, Steve, come up to me, outrageous at this last event.
Yeah.
I had people from unincorporated Bonita in Pelican Landing coming up to me, "What's going on? How come I can't vote? I went up there to vote, you know, and I was, I was gonna support you." Right. And I'm like, "Ah, sure." And, yeah, but I got up there and I couldn't vote, but I, and I showed them, "Look, says Bonita Springs right there, why can't I vote?" And so I think that we need to, I think that we need to go ahead and push this thing to a point where the people know that it's okay for them to be inside the city of Bonita Springs, and that we're, number one, we're not doing this for money. We're fine. We're fine, we're not doing it for land grab, we don't need it. We don't need the, we don't need the tax, we don't need that. It's them, it's the people that we're interested in, it's what they have to offer. They come to the same restaurants, they come and eat at the same places, they have their beaches in the city of Bonita Springs, their beach is in the city of Bonita Springs. You know what? Just as continuity, just to move that to a nice, straight line at Bonita Beach Road, I think we should go on the road. I think we should go on the road, and I think it should be, we should, council should authorize staff, and I, quite frankly, if the Estero, be careful here, is it?
Vote Estero.
Vote Estero. If the Vote Estero people hadn't been so aggressive with this, and so, you know, you know, pointing at Bonita so much, I don't think we would take such an aggressive stance, but I think that it's time to do that. Because, I mean, it, to me, I think those people need the opportunity to come within the site of Bonita Springs and be voting members of Bonita Springs, and we ought to offer them that opportunity.
Yeah, let me make my position very clear. I don't want to grab any part of Lee County that's not interested in being part of the city.
Yeah.
But to have one neighborhood, one community, under two municipalities, doesn't make sense. It's inefficient, and it just doesn't make logical sense, and it wouldn't be that way if we hadn't been told that the fire district was gonna cut the city limits.
Yeah.
If we'd chosen our own city limits, it'd been different.
Yeah, absolutely. It would, that would not have happened, that the entire community would have came in, yeah. Yes, Martha?
Yeah, I have a question about that. I don't know, and I've got a little surprise coming up for y'all, like, next week, or maybe two weeks from now. I've just been doing a little historical research. You'll love it, you'll love it. Anyhow, can, can there be legislation that says that this DRI, it's a DRI, isn't it? No?
You're talking about Pelican Landing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This DRI has, or DRIs have to be contiguous in either one municipality or the other, that they can't cross a city line just as much as one can't cross, oh, I guess they can, cross a county line?
Well, DRIs throughout...
You can't have a municipality cross a county line.
Right. We have Quail's Walk, which also crosses Collier and Lee. So I mean, it's not uncommon to have DRIs in two jurisdictions. In this situation, there was one jurisdiction at the time of the city's incorporation, and it's split it in parts.
May I respond?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Can there be legislation specific to that?
Well, I don't want to legislate to this. I don't, I don't want to be, I don't want to be the city council that said you have to be part of the city.
Yeah.
I want to give the citizens an opportunity to say yes or no. And right now, they don't have that opportunity, especially if they're gonna try to create a Village of Estero that uses that portion of Pelican Landing.
Well, let's ask the council a simple question so we can just cut to the chase here. Counsel, do you want to afford the people in unincorporated, or in unincorporated Lee County and Pelican Landing, do you want to afford them the chance to express that through a vote?
Yes.
Yes?
I have a question.
Yes, I mean, okay, hold on.
Yeah.
Let's finish this out. So if that being true, can we authorize staff to go ahead and kinda carve a pathway for that? And it's gonna take education, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a lot of notification, it's gonna take a lot of things to go ahead and set the table for that, and it's gonna going to have to be something that happens pretty rapidly, because we want them to be able to have the opportunity to say yes or say no before the Vote Estero thing gets along too far. Would you not agree?
I do agree, and please understand, for those of you who are going to take this out of context and make this a land grab, it's not. You know, this is an opportunity to look at the process of how you get there. This is not saying the city council wants to put a vote in, this is for the people to say, "Well, what is the process for getting there?", and then, you know, make a decision on whether they should or shouldn't.
Well, yeah, and it's also, it's another one of those things, it's like, you know what? We're going to ask you a question, you know, at some point in time, and do you want, do you want us to ask you the question? I mean, and that's just it. I think it's, I think it's time, it's way, it's probably way past time, but we've been very patient with this, I think, more so than anything, especially with Pelican Landing. And like you said, I've talked to a lot of the, some of the, some of the people, and I won't quote anybody in particular, because they don't like it, but there's quite a few people up there in the Estero area that are like, "Yeah, that, that makes sense." But, because Don, in all, because they respect Don Eslick so much, and they know that he lived in that area, that's what really is the thing that really makes them, you know, really afraid and sometimes to express themselves, and I understand that.
Yeah, and I, you know, I respect Don greatly, and I don't, I don't know that we can really go forward unless we get some support out of people who have respect in that group. You know, we need to make sure we do educate them as to what the potential benefits are being part of the city.
So, council, can, can we go ahead and, and give instructions to staff to go ahead and start kind of putting together a process and allowing Stephen and/or myself to work with staff, to put on kind of an educational program, or to at least contact some people? Would you be all right with that?
Would you call it a welcoming committee?
Absolutely.
The Bonita Springs Welcoming Committee.
Or, I don't know what we would...
I don't want to trivialize it, I mean, this is...
No, no, I wouldn't. I would think we'd want to welcome them to come to our city.
But anyway, invitation, what have you. John?
I think I understand the direction, we can start to put something together.
Okay, and like I said, we, probably the, I think that's probably enough for now.
Yeah.
But, and again, I would stress as well as you are, is that this isn't about the piece of property, this is about continuity.
Right.
In that particular area. That's the only reason. I think that it's, it's got to be really confusing.
Yep.
So, I think that that's the main reason. All right, council?
And if I may, if I can be involved with this committee or sit on those meetings, I'd offer my services.
Well, there can't be a committee.
No.
Right, sunshine law. Remember, we need to follow the sunshine laws.
We're okay. We're going to need to depend on Councilman McIntosh and, and staff here, quite a bit here, and, but we'll all have our shot on it. And if we, it's sometime when we prepare that paper, and what it is, at some point in time, it's got to be a comparison. If we turn the switch on and you end up being in the city of Bonita Springs, what's your life going to be that like that next day? And that's a real important thing for them to know. How is my life going to change? So, and I think it's pretty positive stuff, but we'll leave it at that. Anything else, Stephen?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Steve, you have anything, please.
Thank you. Martha, just want to, we all want to express our condolences to what you went through, because it's not an easy thing to go through. So, our thoughts are with you, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Steve.
That, you know, that we're all together as a family here, okay?
Thank you.
Mayor, I want to concur with Bill about Palmyra. I think that that approach was an excellent approach, and I, my wish is that would be standard practice in the future, but that's your call, obviously. And the final thing is, we, for those of us that attended Chief Kinsey's retirement, I thought it was an excellent ceremony, the change of command was fantastic, and there was a great, great group of people that were there. But the one thing that I have to say, that we should be very proud of our mayor, he gave an awesome speech about the community, and that our community is truly a family. And mayor, great job.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of other things here before we start wrapping this up.